Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular February meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. We will first ask the appellant to step forward and be sworn in, be seated in the chairs to my right, and offer any testimony that he or she would like us to hear. Following that, we will ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who is in favor of the appeal and anyone in the audience who is in opposition to the appeal. Following that testimony, I will check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from their office, and if anything has arisen, either from the code enforcement comments or the public comment, that appears to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. We ask that the appellants confine themselves, if at all possible, to a 10-minute presentation, and we ask that the members of the public confine themselves to a five-minute presentation. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next one. We do have a couple of items of note before we get started. The -- we are going to have two cases that are on the agenda tonight that will not actually -- three cases that are on the agenda tonight that will not actually be heard. Case 0142-2024 and 0133-2023, that's 270 Loudoun Road, 270 Loudoun Road, both those are concerning the redevelopment of the mall. Those cases are -- will be postponed. Did they ask to postpone?
Till March, yes, they did.
Till March, all right. Do I hear a motion from the board to postpone these cases to the March meeting?
Still moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the cases are postponed, effectively recessed until the March -- regular March meeting of the board. There is another case, which has been withdrawn, which is case 0101-2023-5 Pine Street, RN Neighborhood Residential District, Concord White Properties 6 LLC. We will not be hearing that case because the appellant has withdrawn it. So if you're here for either of the -- any of those three cases, you need not remain unless you would like to make an evening of listening to the zoning board. Our first item on the agenda tonight is actually a little different from what I just described. This is a rehearing request. When we get a rehearing request, what we're doing is dealing with a case that we have already heard and made a decision on, and someone has come forward, in this case, the appellant, with a request for rehearing. We do not necessarily take testimony, we rely on the submission of those who are soliciting the rehearing or requesting it, and the criteria are not the same as they would be for a variance or a special exception. In this case, the board is meant to consider whether or not there has been new information not available at the time that we heard the case that is germane, that we should be considering, or that we made an error in procedure, or that we made an error in law. So -- and we did, in the case of case 0123-54 North Main Street, get a submission, a written submission. Did everyone have a chance to review that?
Yes.
Everybody did? Okay. So I guess what I'll do is start with Mr. Wallner. Did you see anything in the submission that convinced you that we made an error in law, procedure, or that there are new facts that we ought to consider?
I reviewed all the material, and I did not.
All right. How about you, Mr. Waters?
I did not, and just -- I do have a couple of brief comments in response to what I saw that I wanted to point out. The -- one of the -- one of the alleged errors of law in our reasoning was that we had expressed an understanding it would be inappropriate to consider a financial hardship, and the applicant pointed out that there's a case here, Town of Harrington -- I'm sorry, Harrington versus the town of Warner, that states that a reason -- a lack of a reasonable return of investment is a consideration that we should have taken into account. However, I did take a quick look at that case because I was interested in that, and it -- the case said, though, the evidence can't just be conclusory or mere lay opinion, there's had to be some kind of expert, it would seem, actual evidence, so -- which we didn't hear any of that. And the other thing I wanted to note is, they said, "We failed to consider whether they even needed a variance for a partial and fleeting obstruction." But our practice has been, if the applicant is claiming they don't need a variance, then that should be -- that should be brought as an appeal of the zoning -- zoning's decision. It wasn't brought to us as an appeal, it was just brought to us as the request for a variance. So I didn't -- I don't think, along with anything else that I saw, that those would be grounds for reconsideration.
Ms. Perkins.
I was not a part of the original vote on this, but I didn't see anything that stood out to me.
All right. In other words, that we justify rehearing.
Right.
Mr. Davey.
I'm with Ms. Perkins. I'm still new, and I'm still digesting this.
All right. I was -- when I reviewed it, the question of a financial hardship playing a role in our decision did catch my eye. That is not something we have in the past been considered, and I'm wondering if maybe perhaps we were in error in that respect. So it occurred to me that we might, at least, and it may not be -- maybe moot, because if no one else in the port wants to vote for rehearing, that it might be worth soliciting our own legal advice on how that decision would apply to this case prior to deciding whether or not we made an error in law. That's just my take on it. Because it was news to me, and we have definitely not operated that way in the past. We have said, "Financial hardship is really not an issue." Cell phones that won't be quiet are an issue, so we'll see what we can do about that.
It caught my attention as well, and I -- and which is why I wanted to look at that case they cited, and that's interesting. I'm glad they mentioned it, because it is something that -- it would be an error, according to that, if we simply said that we shouldn't consider financial hardship at all, but I think that error would -- if an error was made, it would be immaterial, in my opinion, because I don't think they really presented any evidence other than just saying that we're not going to get enough of a return on investment. I mean, they didn't -- there was no expert testimony or anything concrete about the fact that their lack of the additional height would so change the economics of the project as to make it an unreasonable return. If they had presented that evidence, and then we still had said, "No, that's -- we're not going to consider that," then yes, I think that would be an error.
Suppose we were to rehear the case in order to allow them to present that evidence? I realize that theoretically, that the evidence is supposed to not be available at the time. We have been flexible about that in the past, because good information is good information, whether we got it in a timely way or not, but I -- just raising the question.
So, well, based on that question, was it really a part of the actual decision? If you weren't given a lot of facts based on that, was it really part of the decision?
It was -- the vote was three to two.
Okay.
I can only speak for myself.
Right.
I voted in favor of the appeal, and one of the considerations that was in my mind was that the project really wasn't feasible or did not appear to be feasible, according to the testimony. Again, there was not a lot of detail about why.
Okay.
If they didn't have the extra floor with the -- with the restaurant on top. So that did strike me as a significant issue, but there -- that's as far as it went.
Procedure -- in my mind, it was, and I voted nay, and I didn't really take it into account, because I didn't think the evidence was concrete, and normally, we wouldn't allow an applicant to bring new evidence, but I am cognizant of the fact that maybe they hadn't brought that evidence because we, you know, we historically have not considered it, and maybe that was wrong. So I am -- if the rest of the board is inclined to want to hear more evidence about it, I don't --
Is that procedural, to hear more evidence?
Well, what we would -- what we could do, if we hear more evidence, would be a rehearing. What they've asked for is a rehearing. One of the things that we could do, again, because this is new ground for me, I would be more comfortable if we, assuming the board wants to grant a rehearing, and may not, what I'm hearing around the table, the answer is probably no, but if they were, I would probably consider re -- recessing the consideration of the -- of the request for rehearing in order to get advice from counsel about just exactly what that decision means, and have we been on the wrong track, or is there another way to look at it?
So postponing this to get advice?
Yeah, I'm also conscious of the fact that Mr. Davey, are you prepared to vote on this particular issue right now? Okay, so we only have a four-member board on this rehearing issue right now, which actually does -- does the applicant or the butters have a right to a five if they want it on a rehearing motion?
I don't know.
Dr. Tracy? I don't -- I think so.
Good question.
I've never actually been -- looked at that before, because we've never had a --
It's never come up.
I -- my inclination is that they probably -- well, I'm kind of guessing, I don't know, I haven't done research on it, but since it hasn't come up, my inclination is they probably do, or at least if it's discretionary, I think -- I -- that's another reason why I think perhaps your suggestion is, instead of voting on this, getting the advice of legal counsel might not be a bad idea.
And then vote on it.
I think procedurally, that might be, yeah.
So, and --
It's not a huge burden to the community, because we're not -- no one has to show up for our decision, you know, they don't, so.
No one's testifying.
No, but it does have to be -- it's a public hearing, it would be a public hearing. You know, we could defer it to the next meeting.
We could defer and get the advice before then?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, even that evening.
Or at that meeting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we could do that and handle it that way, if the board so concludes, because I agree with your thinking about, since we're -- it's new territory for us, I can easily see why an appellant might not have gone into great detail about how the finances would work on the project. And also, I don't really feel comfortable that I understand how that could or should have an effect on our decision.
And I wouldn't want to follow that up with an incorrect procedure.
Right.
And how to handle it either, if we don't have a full five, if that was.
All right. That's, yeah, because I think it's -- it would be consistent with our practice on variances and special exceptions. We always ask the appellant, if they want to hear a five-member -- have a five-member board, and they're given the option of waiving that or holding off. And here, we don't really have a precedent for that, but we err on the side of caution, we defer.
Yeah. So I -- oh, go ahead, Nick.
On the second variance request, we really didn't see an error in law, or there's no new information on the second variance request, so aren't we really going to be just dealing with the first variance request?
About the obstructed view? No, I think both apply, because they had to do with the height of the building, both of them.
And either way, we're down to four, because he just found out he was voting on it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think you could -- I could argue.
Yeah, I think we should defer.
We're comfortable with that.
And I'll get an opinion from the assistant solicitor for you on the issue.
Or perhaps we just have a chat with her.
Yep, yep, I can, I'll talk.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to recess the decision on the reconsideration request until the March meeting.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. We will defer and request that the city solicitor's office fills in on the significance of that case that Attorney Powell cited in his memo to us. Okay, that takes us to the next case, which is our first regular hearing, which is case 0136-2023, 57 Regional Drive, IN Industrial District, Gerald P. McCarthy, revocable trust is the owner. The applicant requests a variance from Article 2824J, Table of Principal Uses, to permit the establishment of a non-public elementary or secondary school, B1, where such use is not permitted. Is there someone here from the Gerald P. Mark McCarthy Revocable Trust? Please come forward.
The landlord, no, but my name is Kristi Heath, I oversee.
Well, if you're authorized to speak on his behalf, then you're the person we want to talk to. Please come forward.
They withdrew.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but? Would you -- there's -- is there a sign-up page over there?
Yep.
Would you please jot your name down on that, so that we don't misspell it or misrepresent it? And then, for the record, identify yourself again, for those of us who are slow-witted and don't remember the name, it's Kristi Heath.
So, my name is Kristi Heath, and I oversee Ready, Set, Connect at 57 Regional Drive. My exact title is VP of Related Services for Gersh Autism. I have been with Ready, Set, Connect now for 10 years, we've been in the building for almost 14 now, and thankfully, I've been able to see it grow. We provide ADA services for children with autism. I know it says a daycare, but we're actually more of a medical facility, providing these services through insurance companies. It's insurance-funded, we have kids from the age of two to about 14 years of age. They are early intervention, two to six, until they have to go to school. They can come to us 30 hours a week, 20 hours a week, 40 hours a week, depending on medical necessity. We have BCBA's and ADA therapists who work with them directly, providing supervision and applied behavior. We do DTT. We actually have changed the model a lot over the year to grow with the needs of the community, so where we started off only having early intervention, we also have social groups and life skills programs for our school-age kids, because at the age of six, they have to. Because at the age of six, they have to go to school. What we are finding is happening is the schools still are prepared for some of the children. We try our best to get them ready in that short span that we can have them for the full day, but we've had school districts actually reach out to us to see if we can take them because they can't handle...
Full time?
Yeah.
Oh, and then they would pay you too?
Right. So, that's what we're looking to change right now, because we do, we lose about 25 clients every fall because they're transitioning off to school. But they, some of them are successful, which is amazing. That's ultimately where we want them to be, in with the kids, not in like a workspace or any of those, like, let's make them as independent as possible and really prepare them. The, we are looking to have two classrooms, two of our current rooms. We already have it look like a classroom model, again, to prepare them and get them ready to go off to school and be successful. It's just some of the students or clients have higher needs. They are still working on toilet training by the time they're going to school. We have some 10-year-olds that are still, you know, not toilet-trained, low communication, they work with AC devices, you know, functional living skills, communication skills, reducing behaviors while increasing just their independence. So, within those classrooms, we want to be able to have five students in each classroom, grades one and two, mixed based off of, obviously, their age and level, but having it meet the needs of what they particularly, which each student would require. So, do they need a one-to-one parent? Having that small class size, having the teachers also specialize in ABA, so it can be an ABA-focused classroom for them.
ABA?
ABA, Applied Behavior Analysis. It is a known, it is what is recommended for children with autism.
I understand.
Yep. And that's what we currently provide, and we want to continue, just grow the model into also being able to help the school districts and the students and families, because some of the other locations are full when they need to send them out of district, or it might not be as appropriate because they don't specialize in that autism, and it could be either behavioral or more medical needs, so...
So, if I'm understanding, the reason you're here is, is your program is, you were already allowed to provide full-day services up till school age, but now that you're going to be paying full-time school-age students, this is considered a change of use? Is that the reason you're here now?
Right. We want to become a non-public school for two of our rooms.
So, when you had them, the school-age kid, just part-time, like after school?
After school.
That was not considered a change of use, but now some of them will be there like six hours a day, so that's going to be a change?
Yeah. Yep. Our funding would change because it would be the school districts instead of insurance. Right now, all of our kids who come to us, it's a medical service, it's paid through insurance.
So, you're not, it's, your whole operation would not be a school?
Nope, just two classrooms.
I see.
So, like charter school?
Yeah, like a charter school, but...
Yeah. It's considered, like she said, it's considered a change of use to elementary and secondary school.
Do you have any outdoor space allocated to you?
We do. We have, well, we have our parking lots, and then we have a playground.
You do?
Yep.
Is this going to increase the number of students onsite at a time, or will you be taking fewer to balance it out? Will you have to take fewer of the younger kids?
Right. So, what we would do is, right now, we're only at 34, and we can take 70 in our location. The, so this would add 10, and so we would have 10 less once we actually increase our census. But right now, we try and do it systematically, and everything has to be approved by the insurance companies with, the BCBA is doing the assessment, having them submit to the insurance companies for approval before they can actually start.
So, all of these students in the school will be tuitioned from the districts, there's no private pay?
It could be. I don't know if our families would necessarily be able to afford that. We've had about four students just in the last year who the districts have tried to find placements for them. They try and get creative. With COVID, we had a little bit more flexibility on what their school hours were, so they would come to us more. But with all of that ending, we have less availability. We already have some school districts, preschoolers, who will pay us for, because they know they can't provide the same level of service as what we can do.
And some of the other schools that do that full-time, they're like a half an hour away, too. So, they're not convenient at all, especially to families that can't afford to get them back and forth that far away.
Sometimes they're even more than a half hour away. They look in Northfield, there's some in the southern part of the state, but what we're also finding, it's not just, there's so many different degrees on why some, a child might not be successful in a school. So, if they are not necessarily behavioral, but they're not learning, and they're not learning really what they need to learn, and we can provide that for them, they might have to go to a different school where it's more behavioral kids. Or a behavioral, high-intensity behaviors, you know, they've looked at some other schools that are known for more medical, frail students, so...
And are you changing anything about the exterior of the space, or?
Nope. We have the space, thankfully. So, in the 10 years I've been there, we had one room, and we continued to take over the office space over that time. So, I started, we had five kids and five staff. You know, in the last year, we've had over 150 clients come and go. We've either ended services because they didn't need us anymore, which is ultimately our goal. But just having that next step, I can remember, I created the social and life skills groups for the kids going off to school, so they could come after school and still learn, learn how to make friends. We have the kitchens, the, like, everything. We've been very fortunate over the years to continue to design and build what the families and the children need.
And the landlord has no objections to...
Nope.
It looks like you've got a pretty, like, diverse mix of fellow tenants in the building here. Is that, has there ever been any issues with, you know, any, anyone having issues with...
No.
When I'm here, everyone seems, it seems to work out okay.
It, what, so when I first started, and we shared with some other, in the office suite, we weren't good tenants for that. We were not good neighbors. People in business meetings were singing down the hall, working with these kids, so... But we have our own space, and it is enclosed. Even our playground is fully enclosed for the safety because we know, you know, the elopement and everything that can occur. But with our other neighbors direct, you know, we have a lot of, there's a lot of adult day programs, two of them in there, and orthodontists, which is on the other end, but we get along very well. And even on the backside, there is another company that specializes in making adaptive furniture and everything for people with special needs, which is amazing. So, it's a nice location.
Good. Any other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from Code Enforce?
Not at this time.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a variance, application for a variance for a use classified as a non-public, non-public elementary school or secondary school. We heard testimony that it would be a modification to services already being offered in the facility that is up and running now. Why don't we start with Mr. Davey? How do you see this?
Are you on this?
He's not on this.
Well, then we won't start with you. We'll start...
He was ready to go, too.
Hey, I've talked to anybody. Ms. Perkins, how do you see it?
You're going to start with me. I'm looking for my cheat sheet of the five categories. I don't see this as a hardship to the community. They're already fitting into the same space, so it's not going to change the exterior, affect the neighborhood. And I think we definitely need it, you know, it's definitely going to be of service to the area, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I see why they need to get the variance. It's a very technical change, but in practice, it's not going to have any, any significant change in their current use, which seems, no tenants, fellow tenants came to complain, and it's obviously extremely important, critical work that they're doing, so I have no objection at all.
Mr. Monahan?
I agree entirely with Mr. Winters.
To round out the requirements, certainly not contrary to the public interest, it's not going to diminish value. It's going to do substantial justice, and I think literal enforcement of the ordinance, particularly if we just have a slight modification of its use, would create an unnecessary hardship. So, I'm inclined to support it.
I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved, moved to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of granting the variance, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted. Are you good, Tracy?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
I'm not a lawyer, but I tried.
You did very well. We'll get you, uh...
So, I doubt you're going to be first up every time.
Yeah, we'll get you your very own law license. Okay, where are we? We're at case 0137, 158 Manchester Street, Highway Commercial District, PRM Auto Concord Two LLC. The owner requests a variance to the table of maximum sign dimensions for non-residential districts to permit a total of 160 square feet in two signs, where up to 66 square feet in two signs was permitted by variance in 2015. Please come forward. Would you jot your name on the sign in sheet?
Yep.
May we have your name, please?
My name is Kyle Harvey.
And you swear to tell the truth, Mr. Harvey?
I do.
Please proceed.
Um, we are looking for a variance in the maximum dimensions of the signs according to, for, in regards to the two pylon signs that we have. One of the pylons is only getting a face change, so that's pretty much the same thing that's already there, but it's just going to be a new face. The other one is a pylon that we're switching from a lollipop-style pylon to a pylon that covers this, essentially the same dimensions height-wise and width-wise, but the pool covers go all the way to the ground, which is why it's a lot more square footage. But it does, it is the same width as, I mean, except for the side parts. I don't know if you guys have the picture here.
They do have it.
We do have a couple pictures, I think.
I'm talking about the KUSPS 20.
Okay, the one that says Kia?
Yep.
And the existing sign is a lollipop, and you want to replace it with the monument?
Yeah, with the monument sign, yes. It's a, well, it's a 20-foot. So, it's a pylon.
And the other sign, you're just leaving it as, as just new?
It's just a new face.
Do we have a sample of that one?
Should be.
Is it the one that says parts and services?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I see, all right.
Is this, is this something coming from Kia that they're changing their branding a little bit?
Yes. So, these are mass-manufactured signs from Kia. They're trying to go with the more monument look, with the silver and black and everything. So, they make a lot of these signs on South, and then they ship them up here. It'd be difficult for them to redesign it, get all the engineering work done in order to appease the square footage, so just looking for the variance to get that approved.
So, it's not, not just the design is mandated by Kia, but the actual size is also pre-manufactured and required of them?
Yeah. They, I think they offer a couple different sizes, but they're all, they all look exactly the same, it's just different heights. And this is the 20-foot sign, which is the same as the old sign, is also a 20-foot sign.
I'm sorry.
You don't have, I, probably not, but you don't happen to know why we granted a variance in 2015, do you?
I don't know. I mean...
And did we?
It says here, we did.
Yeah, no, did we know why?
Yeah.
Find that, just give me two seconds.
I appreciate it.
And while you're doing that, I'm going to distract you with a question. In the case of the existing sign, which has the oval at the top of it and sits on a pylon, is it just the oval that's considered the sign there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Whereas with the new sign, the whole rectangle is considered the sign?
Correct, because the background black is considered part of the sign the way we calculate.
Okay.
Well, the old system doesn't have a whole lot of information on the decision, it just has the motion. Sometimes the logic is in there, but it's not on this one. It just says that it passed by unanimous, unanimous vote, excuse me. So, apparently, in 2015, you didn't have any issues.
Typically, with signs like that, the rationale is that, given the context, the scale of the sign needs to match the scale of the activity around it. And that's why, which means the buildings, the open spaces, the rate at which the traffic's going by, that sort of thing.
I can see the applicant and I worked closely together to make sure the new sign, because it's a full replacement, meets the setback from the new right-of-way on Manchester Street. Some of you may realize that that right-of-way got wider, and so the new sign is going to be back enough that it meets all the setbacks from the new right-of-way.
Very good.
Good.
Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I think that, I think that's about it.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Schweiger. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, sir.
Would you jot your name on the sign-in sheet, please?
Yes. I guess my feeling is, I'm not an expert on signs, I don't know why the sign ordinance limits the sign to a certain extent, but I'm kind of turned off by this idea that because some out-of-state company wants a bigger sign, you've got to give it to them. I think that we need to say no. The City of Concord makes its own zoning ordinances, and nobody's going to tell us how big a sign we should allow. So, my feeling is that just because Kia wants a bigger sign, you shouldn't give it to them. And overall, I think that if bigger signs are a good idea, instead of going through and approving them one by one, you need to get the planning board to increase the allowable size of the sign for everybody instead of spot approvals. Thank you.
You're welcome. The record will show that was Roy Schweiger testifying. Y'all sat? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from Code Enforce?
Nothing additional.
With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Mr. Harvey, did you want to offer any factual clarification in response to what you just heard?
I don't know if you've seen the picture. It's pretty much the same-sized sign, but because it's like a monument style, it has the side, they're considering the whole dimension of the base and size. The other one is just a, so, it's literally the same height, same width. It just, it's just the way that it counts.
And it looks a lot nicer.
So, it's...
I'm getting there. There we go.
Yeah.
The same height, same width. Not officially, I really, I'm really trying to...
Okay, we can't have inter-ille chatter out there. It slows down the elegant flow of the meeting, you see. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a, two sign variances, I believe. One was to replace an existing sign with new... One was to replace an existing sign with new graphics that is, is there by variance, I guess. And the other was to install a new sign. We heard testimony that the visual impact of the sign is actually very similar to the one that's there, but because of the way it's configured, its area is calculated differently.
Different.
All right, let's start with Mr. Walner. How do you look at this, sir?
If anything, it looks like it's a little bit smaller when you take the oval part of it and consider the square area, so I don't even know why we're seeing this, but I see, I see this as something that I would obviously approve.
Very good. Mr. Monahan.
Yeah, I agree, and there was a recommendation in the cover note from the Tony, well, you might wanna condition on the white monument section staying blank, not have additional signs put on it.
The, you mean?
The black.
The black.
Yeah.
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 Mr. Winters.
Yeah, and I think likely, as Chris said earlier, the reason we likely granted this in 2015 is there is a pretty important wayfinding function to the signs there on Manchester Street, because it's a pretty heavily traveled road with a lot, lot going on, and they're, not having clear signage can definitely result in accidents. And I, while I, I take the point that, you know, we don't wanna outsource our control to these other companies, I think within reason, pretty much every, most auto dealerships are, have a lot of conditions on them, and as long as it's not unreasonable, we wanna make sure that we can have car dealerships in, so I'm inclined to agree with the variance.
Ms. Perkins.
Same. I think Nick's right. I think it, based on the shape of it, because you've lost the oval on the top, it actually appears smaller, it fits in the new setback requirements, so it's gonna sit further back. And I think the look of it is actually going to reduce the impact of attention, because it's sleeker and cleaner-looking and more up-to-date. But I do like Jim's point of what was pointed out, that we should make sure that it's clear to know, no additional signage should be added to it, that what they're presenting is what's approved, not to add additional signage.
Very good. Would anyone care to make, I agree with my colleagues, by the way. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we wanna add the commission, the condition?
Yeah, I think we'd like to add the condition that the sign is approved as represented in the, in the application, that the blankness should say blank.
And the second concurs.
And the second concurs. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The vote is unanimous. The variances, variance says, are granted. That brings us to case 13916 Manchester Street. Applicant seeks, oh, Gateway Performance District, ROI Irrevocable Trust. The applicant seeks a variance from Article 2867M to allow an otherwise conforming freestanding directory sign to be located on a premises other than where the uses are located. Gentlemen, would you scribble your names on that sheet, please? Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but?
I do. You?
Me too.
No, I've been out on this.
It's a team effort here.
Well, I gotta be straight here. All right, gentlemen, if you would identify yourselves as you testify, fire away, Mr. Pollock.
Yes, thank you. My name's Ari Pollock with the Gallagher Firm here in Concord, appearing for the applicant, ROI Irrevocable Trust. John Bissin serves as the trustee. With me this evening, and to my left, is Alex Velas. He's a development consultant for the trust. And to my right is Bob Duval with the TF Moran Engineering Firm, and he is the civil and traffic engineer on the project. Our immediate request relates to 16 Manchester Street, which was formerly a residential development that was improved with two single-family homes. This is a 1.42-acre parcel that has public frontage both on Manchester Street and Black Hill Road. It's wedged between those two streets. The parcel's part of a common scheme of redevelopment of assembled parcels, which was the subject of a comprehensive development plan that was approved by the planning board in December of last year. The 16 Manchester Street portion of that development plan is intended to be redeveloped as a financial institution and is to be the subject of a forthcoming site plan application. The CDP comes first, site plans come next. The property is located in the city's Gateway Performance District. The approved CDP plans showed a proposed overall development monument sign to be located on 16 Manchester Street. The sign is intended to advertise uses that are actually located on development parcels that front on Black Hill Road and are behind Black Hill Road, and those include Lot 3 on tax map 792Z and lots 33 and 34 on map 781Z. We're requesting a variance from Article 2867M because we would like to be allowed to put a conformingly-sized sign, placement, size, visuals, all conforming, but we would like the sign to be able to identify and advertise businesses that actually will be located behind Black Hill Road. In other words, we wish to have a sign that advertises off-premises users. They are all part of the common scheme of development. And so as to hardship, even though Black Hill Road is a public road that's owned and maintained by the city of Concord, the frontage is behind the lots on Manchester Street. We have a situation of fall-away grading as we go closer to the Merrimack River, and it's simply visually blocked by the improvements that are between the two streets. You see the red circle on the plan behind you? That's the location of the proposed freestanding sign, and it would be, I don't see the pointer thing, but...
Oh, sorry.
No, that's my fault. I should've asked earlier. One moment. Thank you.
Green button.
These are the Black Hill Road parcels that we're referring to that would be advertised on the sign located on this parcel. The ordinance simply prohibits it, and even though we showed it on the comprehensive development plans approved by the planning board, it was understood by all that a variance would be needed for that to proceed. As a consequence of the visual obstruction of the Black Hill Road lots, the owners, tenants, users of the rear portion of the overall development will experience hardship in the form of lack of visibility and lack of wayfinding for the traveling public. And an off-premises sign would remedy these inferiorities of the placement of those properties. The sign would also help prioritize the existing signaled intersection as the entrance for those businesses. The, this is the signalized intersection right here, which is, of course, Manchester Street, going through Old Turnpike Road, going off to the north, and Black Hill Road looping to the south. Actually, it's not a loop, it's a dead end up here. And so one of the concerns of the planning board and the planning staff was to try and prioritize this intersection versus exits from this property versus this spine road punching through versus other connection points of the development, get as many people through the traffic light as possible. The sign, in our opinion, is a very reasonable use of that area of the property, because as I said, it will improve business location and wayfinding for those that are behind Manchester Street. And also, we're not seeking relief specific to the sign. There's no request for you to enlarge the sign or to do anything as to placement in a setback or anything. We believe the sign can conform. The sign's in the public interest because it supports flexibility in development, which, of course, is the whole purpose behind the performance districts and comprehensive plans of development to pursue a common scheme of businesses and mixture of uses. The, the spirit and intent of the ordinance and substantial justice are all served, because when you look in the ordinance's goals, section, or mission or purpose relating to signage, there is a priority on improved pedestrian and traffic safety, which, of course, telling people where they're going and helping them find there is safer for everybody on the roadway and looking to get to a destination. And of course, there's no evidence to suggest that immediately surrounding properties would suffer any devaluation as a result of an otherwise conforming sign. There's no suggestion that what's on the sign would be a factor in value, and we're not asking for any relief relative to the sign placards or sizing, just to have the sign advertise uses that are off-property. I'll keep it short, and I appreciate you taking this under consideration. Take any questions. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Two questions. How big is the sign gonna be?
I think it's, is it 100 square feet allowed? Whatever is the allowance is the answer.
And how many different things would you, as a direct, you said directory, how many different units would be mentioned on?
There are seven parcels or seven units that are part of this common scheme of development. There are five that have frontage on Black Hill Road, and so while we haven't got the sign designed yet, and five is an odd number that doesn't lay out symmetrically on a sign, I'm guessing it's five or six businesses will be advertised on the sign.
Yeah, I just get a little concerned with directory signs on a, on a road that's got a lot of traffic coming downhill at a rapid pace, and then trying to figure out where, what's on that sign would add a distracting quality to drivers. I'm wondering if that's an issue you've considered, you've...
It's an issue we've considered, and we've specifically stayed away from relief relating to the sign, because it hasn't been designed, and we don't wanna complicate our request for tonight. If it turns out that we need some relief relative to the sign to make it safe and legible and be serving its purpose, we'll be back, and there's obviously nothing binding about tonight's decision.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you said the, I guess the buildings that are on Black...
Black Hill.
Or she, how?
Black Hill Road.
Black Hill Road. I guess a couple of questions about those. Although, what's the height of those? Then, are they gonna be retail, office space?
The buildings that are closest to Black Hill Road, according to the CDP that was approved, are retail and restaurant, single-story structures. The multifamily and the senior living towards the rear of the site, I believe, are four-story buildings.
So the retail's...
Retail's one-story.
Be one-story?
Correct.
Okay.
Maybe 20 feet.
Does multiple buildings, they, would they have multiple tenants, or would they all be tenant per building?
The retail could have multiple tenants.
So the directory could have more than five?
I...
Again, I gotta deal with this.
Yeah, exactly. I, I tend to doubt that. The CDP is approved for whole spaces, and so I think we're talking about five placards on a sign. And again, sign hasn't been designed.
Okay. So on, on the, on your diagram here, is it everything, everything, I guess, east of Black Hill Road has not been constructed yet, correct? Everything, all, every, all of this along the river in brown and...
Let me, let me try it this way. None of the redevelopment uses have been constructed. The CDP was approved six weeks ago, and we're still working through conditions of approval before we bring forward site plans.
Okay. But the buildings on Manchester Street, are those existing, or those...
They are not.
So everything here needs, has to be constructed?
That is correct.
So, sorry, they, where are the sign, if the sign that you're proposing here is gonna be for all the buildings tucked east, where is the sign gonna be for the, for the building that is actually on 16 Manchester?
It's, it's intended to be a financial institution, and it will have a wall sign on the building.
Oh, which would be allowed separately from the, okay.
There's, both entitlements under the ordinance.
Got it.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm just a little confused. I mean, that's quite a major intersection right there. Does the city allow for directional signage to businesses on the intersection?
Not on the intersection. Multi-tenant sites are allowed a directional sign that has the panels on it.
So, but that would be up the street. That wouldn't be...
It would be on the back street. Right. It would be on Black Hill.
So it wouldn't be right off of Manchester Street to say this is up here?
Right, 'cause the uses are for the street. So if you look behind you...
Right.
It's for the brown uses that are off Manchester Street, so their sign would be off Manchester.
Up there, not down at the intersection.
Correct.
So that's why they're trying to put it. It just seems like...
It shows it right there on Manchester Street.
Like you mentioned, coming down Manchester Street to try to take a left there instead of, at the intersection, taking a left.
I'm not sure...
This puts the sign closest to the intersection that the planning board would like them to use.
It's also as close as we can put it, given the areas...
Without putting it at the intersection.
We can't. We, so that's DOT land.
Yeah.
And the only question that we have for us is that it's off, it's...
That it's off. I understand that. Yeah.
One more quick question. So if, or is it expected that they're gonna be continuing under common ownership once the development is completed? And what if, what if at some point they are sold off separately and fall into different ownership, and then you've got a situation where one lot owner is controlling the sign for a different lot owner? Is that possible?
It, it is possible that the lots will not be in common ownership, and in easement will be placed to allow use by others of the sign.
Got it.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna say, I do see now it looks like they're trying to intentionally curve that driveway, so it really just be right-handed traffic coming in.
That was another condition of the planning board's approval. Didn't have anything to do with the sign, but yes, that's the traffic pattern.
Okay. Yep. That makes more sense.
We good? Anything else, gentlemen?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
I just, to, to the questions over here about the readability, this is a performance district, so the sign does have to also go through ADR, Architectural Design Review, so those issues will be addressed in further review.
Thank you. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for an off-premises sign. We heard testimony that this is a multi-building, multi-use development, and the exposure for the development to the main road, which is Manchester Street, is on a site, but is not on all of the sites that the sign might represent. And that we heard also testimony that that is the place where it would be most visible and the safest. Starting with Ms. Perkins, how do you look at this?
You know, this is my first time with this type of thing, but I think knowing that the way they're trying to direct the traffic, seeing where the development's gonna be, and Dr. Tracy's comment about it having to be reviewed further, I think I'm okay with it.
Mr. Winters.
Yeah, I mean, it, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to put it farther back for, in terms of functioning. I do wonder if they're gonna need a, need to get a big sign once all its details are finalized, but I guess that's not an issue for today's. But in terms of the placement, I think it makes perfect sense.
Mr. Monahan.
I agree with my colleagues.
Mr. Walner.
Ditto.
Ditto for me, too. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
I will second.
I like the dynamic duo over there tonight.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. Ms. Hutton, do you have the rationale that you need?
I do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next case. We'll move on to the next case then, which is case?
30 Manchester Street.
30 Manchester?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Applicant seeks a variance from Article 2824-J7 to allow car wash to be developed, to allow the car wash, allow a car wash, I assume, to be developed as accessory to the principal gasoline use.
Never seen you before.
You're still here? You're still sworn?
Still sworn. Still swear the same.
This is like Groundhog Day.
I know it. I know it. Thanks for indulging us once more. I'm still Ari Pollock. I still work at the Gallagher family. Still here for the ROI Irrevocable Trust, John Bissin's the trustee, and Alex to my right and Bob, to my left, and Bob to my right are still my friends and colleagues.
All right. I'm glad to hear the relationship's holding up.
Given time. Our request on this application relates to 30 Manchester Street, which is just up the road a bit from what we were discussing. It was formerly a retail strip center with various tenants, and the applicant is the owner of the subject properties, which actually is three separate parcels that have a total acreage of 3.4 acres. Some of that acreage, all of the acreage, rather, has frontage both on Manchester Street and Black Hill Road, same condition as before. And the parcels are still part of a common scheme of development, as we had just been discussing for the signage. A CDP was again approved for this parcel included in December by the planning board, and the property is also located in the Gateway Performance District. The approved plan shows this property being improved with a combination of sandwich shop, convenience store, retail gasoline, and car wash. And you see the conceptual plan for this land area on the screen with those various elements. The CDP approved a plan that showed proposed car wash adjacent to the convenience and fueling island, but the planning board understood, as did we, the applicant, that it would require a variance to join the gas, convenience, and sandwich uses. Car wash is customary accessory use to an allowed principal use of retail sale of gasoline, but a car wash is not an allowed accessory use in the Gateway Performance District. And in fact, it's not an allowed accessory use anywhere. It's actually only a principal use in a few of the commercial zone districts. Interestingly, there is a supplemental standard that relates to the sale of retail gasoline 28520B, which states that the architectural design of any accessory uses sharing the same premises shall be reviewed by the planning board, which we know it is, but to me, that is an indication that accessory uses to the retail sale of gasoline was at least contemplated on some level by the framers of our ordinance. So specifically, we're asking for an amendment, sorry, a variance to Article 2824-J7 to allow a car wash to be developed accessory to and on the same lot as the principal gasoline, sandwich, and convenience uses. And we've got the building elevation of the convenience store up, and I'm sure you can tell from that picture who it is. In terms of hardship, the retail sale of gasoline is commonly paired with other compatible and similar vehicle uses. In this case, the sale of gasoline is paired with a sandwich shop, a convenience store, and a car wash. It's very typical of automotive convenience plazas, and I'm sure you have been to places that have all of these features. There are some examples right in Concord. And so in terms of hardship, the gasoline sale use is being paired with a sandwich shop, a convenience store, and a car wash. The car wash would be integrated with the sale of gasoline with wash discounts that are offered to customers, bundle, fuel, food, other things sold there. I'm sure we've all taken advantage of a discount car wash after we filled our gas tank, and this would be no different. The hardship essentially is that three of the four typically bundled uses are allowed by the ordinance, and the fourth is not. And leaving one out doesn't make a lot of sense, and it creates a hardship for our user who has a layout that fills the site nicely and safely, and was at least in theory reviewed by the planning board, but understanding a variance would be needed to proceed with a site plan. We think the use is reasonable since it would allow these bundled uses to exist in tandem, and the car wash would complement the gas, convenience, and sandwich. We, and if allowed, of course, by variance, the entirety of the site would need to go forward for site plan review. The site plan review would do the typical things, right? Layout, parking, lighting, environmental compliance, and mitigation of any offset impacts. And in case, you know, you're wondering, car wash technology has greatly improved over the years exponentially. Wash water is engineered to be contained, filtered, reused, so that the sewer loading from that facility is quite minimal and well within the capacities that we're talking to the city about in terms of the general comprehensive development plan. And no, there's no discharge to surface flows or the unprotected environment, which is a lot better than I can say for when I wash cars in my driveway. The public interest supports flexibility in development for mixed-use projects and bundled uses, and the whole idea of a gateway performance comprehensive development plan is to pair a mixture of uses that fit together, and so this is an example within the example, if you will. Public interest supports this bundling as a one-stop convenience for gas, food, snacks, and a clean car. Wrapping it up here, the spirit of the ordinance is served, substantial justice is respected since the requested variance would be consistent with the goals of the Gateway Performance District, which is to promote commercial services and uses expected to adhere to high standards for appearance. And the elevation was up there for a moment, and I think we could all agree it's, there it is, very tasteful for a convenience store. Lastly, there's no evidence to suggest that the immediately surrounding properties would suffer devaluation specific to the addition of the accessory car wash. I want to be clear that the gas, the convenience, the sandwich shop, those are all permitted uses. Those are all able to be located there with or without car wash. The evaluation exercise is specific to adding a car wash by variance, and it doesn't matter. The traffic, of course, is largely a byproduct of what's already coming to the site for the other uses that are bundled together, and we expect the planning board will examine all of those issues when we come forward for site plan review. We are here and happy to take your questions, and I thank you.
Questions from the board? Jim, any questions?
So are you saying that, because just thinking about the car washes in Concord, I'd say at least half, if not most, of them are accessory to gas stations. You're saying that's not, that's not allowed to?
It is allowed as a principal use in some of the commercial districts. And you could have a multiple principal, I don't want to speak for Dr. Hutton, but I think I'm on solid ground here when I say that you could have multiple principal uses if they are each allowed on a single law.
Well, I see, so like, but I think there's on Manchester Street now, isn't there a gas station that has a car wash attached to it?
Separate car wash.
It might be.
Yes, yeah.
But you find them in the same places, I think might be your point, and with that I would agree.
I understand, but like, say, I don't know, Loudon Road in particular, probably the Loudon Road, they're both allowed, so they wouldn't need a variance if they're?
I think they were both allowed in that instance.
Much of Loudon Road is general commercial.
Right.
In that district, it's different than the Gateway Performance, so.
It'll be the same thing by following a different path.
Yeah, right.
Other questions? Brenda? Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
Nope.
You do have a letter.
Ah, yes, I do have a letter. The letter is from Tony Crawford of Circle T and Integra Car Wash. Tony Crawford is opposed to granting the variance. I assume it's Mr. Crawford indicates that the market is saturated for car washes in the area, and he's concerned about that. Let's see if there was anything else that... He thinks it's opposed to the public interest. And without reading all of it, I'd say that's essentially the gist, is concerned about adding a car wash in an area where it's not permitted and creating an overload of car washes in the zone, well, in the neighborhood. Mr. Pollock, would you like to make any factual comments and clarifications?
No.
Very well. Thank you, fellow board members, for pointing out that I'd missed that. With that, we declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and I'll invite discussion, starting with Mr. Monahan. How do you look at this one, sir?
Yeah, I'm inclined to support it. It strikes me as kind of a technical issue that you can have a freestanding car wash, but not something that's not the principal use, and it seems like a reasonable request within the guidelines of the district.
Mr. Winters?
I agree. I mean, the one thing that the applicant didn't point out, but that occurs to me is perhaps, although I understand a car wash might not physically take up that much more space, it does require a fair amount of space if you consider like the layout of having a direct of cars through, but in conjunction with the total development, they have a pretty large parcel here, which gives them, you know, quite a bit of room to maneuver where another parcel in the same zone, it could be a tighter structure that would make a car wash less, less easily put into place. So I understand what the, what Mr. Crawford, I appreciate him being pretty blunt about his reasoning, which is that, you know, it has occurred to me, there are a lot of car washes in Concord, but that's, that's really, that's a free-market question, that's not really a zoning issue, so I do agree that the variance is appropriate.
Mr. Waller?
I agree.
Ms. Perkins?
I agree. I don't see a hardship so much, but I do agree that it's not so far off that it wouldn't be appropriate, but I don't see a hardship to the land as to why to approve it.
Very good. I'm inclined...
Sitting in for Laura, yeah.
Well, no, you make a good point. I'd be inclined to grant it. I think it's consistent with the intent of the ordinance. I think what we may be dealing with here is a distinction without a difference between the car wash as, because it's really consistent with the, all the other uses that are permitted. That it is permitted as a auxiliary use in that context is, seems to me a bit anomalous. So I would be inclined to, even though there's nothing physically, particularly physically true about the lot that requires there to be a car wash there, or makes it a hardship for not to have one there, it seems like a reasonable use. In this case, reasonable wins out in my mind. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'd move to approve the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Everyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance, was it just one variance? It was. Yes. The variance is granted. Tracy, you good?
I am good. That was very good.
Very good. Very good.
I'm like halfway through.
We all get a sticker. It's good.
Yay. I'll bring star stickers next.
Yeah, all get a sticker. Okay, the next one is case 014111 Warren Street. Kyle Valgari is the owner, and he wishes to remodel and expand an existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling, and requests variances from Article 2885B1, continuation of non-conforming structures to allow an enlargement of the structure without being any closer to a property line than the closest dimension of the existing structure, and Article 2852 duplex or two-family dwelling to allow conversion to a two-family dwelling on an existing lot with 66 feet of lot frontage and 4,356 square feet of lot area where 120 feet of frontage and 15,000 square feet of lot area respectively are required. Gentlemen, you swear to tell the truth and think about it?
I do.
Would you sign in on the sheet?
Yes.
And identify yourselves for the record, please.
Good evening, board members. My name is Nick Barrett. I am the owner slash designer of Only Plans LLC, and I'm also representing Kyle Valier tonight.
And I'm Kyle. I'm the owner of 111 Warren, and Nick's here to help better articulate the plans that we have before us.
So what we are proposing and requesting from the board tonight is from Article 28-8-5B1, continuation of a non-conforming structure, as well as Article 28-5-2 duplex or two-family dwelling to allow for a conversion of a two-family dwelling on an existing lot where, you know, the existing lot is not allowing us to have that two-family structure. So what we are proposing is essentially removing a non-conforming section, highlighted in red, of the existing structure on the back that does not actually have a solid foundation underneath it, and what we're trying to do is move that to the side of the house and stretch it along where that jog is to box the house off, so that we are, we are conforming more to the rear setbacks required for the lot, and we're trying to box that side of the house off so that it makes more sense from a layout point of view. Now, in that proposal, what we're trying to do is create a first-floor apartment on the first floor of that unit, and a second-floor apartment with a separate entry, separate ingress for another rental property as well. What we are, what we have found is that the, all the abutters in that area, there's actually a diagram with this, I'm not sure if Tracy has it yet, so all the abutters around that existing building, they must have swapped the houses to a two-family or greater prior to an ordinance change at some point in time, because this is actually the only property with all the other ones touching it that is a single-family. So there are several other single families around the corner, but we're trying to create, you know, more housing for the people of Concord. I'm a lifelong Concord resident myself, so whether that be families for Concord High students, whether that be traveling nurses, or just more availability for rental properties in Concord where there's already a shortage, right? So essentially what we're trying to do is, we are asking for two things, but we're trying to correct an existing issue with this proposal. So we are not increasing the size of the house on the front or the side that abuts to the senior parking entry. We're pulling the existing part of the building back away from the rear setback, pouring a new frost wall, and reframing the majority of the house so that it can be up to code and be safe and conform to all the other code and ordinances that the City of Concord has. So that's essentially what we are asking for tonight, is trying to take that chunk from the back, add it to the side section of the house, and then change the house from a single-family to a two-family dwelling.
Is the, is the GIS map incorrect? I assume you're not going across your property line?
No. Well, it's, it's probably pretty close, but as of right now, it's like right on the line.
Could we go back to that?
Yeah.
That first one?
I'm working on it.
Yeah. Now there, it looks like it's over the property line. I assume that that, the map isn't correct.
It might be slightly off, yeah, yeah, because that was an overlay that I took from the GIS map, and I put... Because that was an overlay that I took from the GIS map, and I put the green block and the red block in there, but it's probably just over it a little bit.
Of all the vast power we have, it does not include allowing you to build on someone else's land.
Right. Right. Yeah. And I can tell you right now, you know, if the fence, the current chain link fence is true to where the property line is, you have about a human body's worth of width in between that and the existing structure. So, I'm not sure when that was added to the house, but it was probably not done by the rules at the time, because it's currently not sitting on anything.
But the red part is posed, right?
No, the red part we're taking away.
The red part's coming down.
Yeah, we're taking that away. Yeah.
Yeah, the red part would get removed and be in more compliance.
So, where's it going exactly?
This area right here where he's talking, this is going to get removed, and this area right here, which on the other plan, you can see...
There's a, yeah, there's a slight jog in the house right now, and we're just creating a rectangle.
So, you're filling it in?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, part of that, the rectangular part of the green is currently vacant.
That's correct. Yep.
So, this area right here we're going to remove?
This doesn't exist right now.
How are you going to get it flushed like that?
So, then right here, we carry the frost wall and come over, where that's going to now remove this spot, and now we're going to box it off and essentially go here. It's, there's nothing there currently. And I'll let Nick continue.
Yeah, so right now, there's, the light blue block is a sunroom. That's a non-conditioned space. That's going to be removed, because that does not have a solid foundation underneath it either.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to correct some of the foundational issues here, but also, you know, with the house literally sitting on the rear lot line, it's, that's not conforming at all. It doesn't help us in any way. We'd have to remove that whole structure anyways, because it's just framing sitting on the ground. So, it's an unsafe structure already, and to us, it just made sense to box off the house and eliminate that job.
So, you're actually losing some square footage?
We are.
Because you're taking off the sunroom, and the red, the red area is, you're maintaining the entire structure, but as you're moving it?
We're technically not losing conditioned space, because it's kind of like a barn-esque thing in the back right now. So, the conditioned space is roughly the same, but in terms of the structure, yeah, we'll be pulling it back. I think it's like 12 feet from the existing structure right now.
Other questions from the board? Is there more you'd like us to know?
Not as of right now. I don't believe so.
Speak to the issue of making it a two-family.
Yes, so, that was the original proposal, and Kyle coming in as the purchaser of the property, you know, noticed the, set the neighborhood, the other, you know, rental properties around, and when he applied for the permit, he did not know that this, this property itself did not, it was a single-family use only. So, he was under the impression for the purchasing that, you know, this would be a two-rental unit for anybody in Concord, but, you know, and it's, it's tough, because I can understand where the lot size and the building size should only allow for a single-family, but we're just kind of unsure why all the other neighbors around were allowed to do this at some point in time, and exceed it, you know, because there's a, there's a three-family unit there, there's a four-to-seven apartment building across the street on a very small lot, and we kind of just wanted to conform with the rest of the area while trying to get, you know, more availability to renters in that neighborhood.
Well, I mean, most of the houses are probably 100 or more years prior to the zone, to that, to answer that question, as to why.
Do you know roughly what the gross square footage, total square footage of the...
Yes, it's roughly 2,200 square feet. Each, each unit is right around 1,100 square feet.
What's it, is it, what's it currently being, is it currently in use as a single-family? Is it currently vacant?
It's vacant.
It's vacant right now. So, it was in use for a single-family when I purchased it, then obviously I became the new owner, and then was made of, obviously, started some ideas with it, and then that's when we went forward with this variance.
How much more footage is it right now? The plan's for 2,200, but how much now?
So, currently, it's right around that. There's, the second story does have dormers that impact a little bit, but it's roughly right around that same amount, yeah. Probably a couple square, 100 square feet less, I would say probably about 2,000.
And what's the square feet of the lot around?
I think 45.
4,500? 45, 46?
43. Yeah. So, Dr. Otten, is...
It's supposed to be 10.
Is, are duplexes allowed in the RN? It's just their issues, they don't have the frontage or the lot size?
Right. It's an allowed, it's a, it's a nonconforming structure with a permitted use, it just doesn't meet the lot size and frontage requirements to have that use.
But the use is permitted if it has it?
The use is permitted in the district, yeah.
What's, 111 Warren, what's the, what are the, what's the cross street is that near?
Uh, what is that cross street?
What, North Washington Street comes in there?
Yeah, a very short street, right at that triangle.
Oh, right by the side of high schools.
Yeah. The senior, it abuts the senior parking lot for Concord High School. This house does.
Oh, the senior, the high school seniors?
Yes.
Oh, I was thinking seniors, seniors.
Sorry. Anyway, it's a parking lot. Yeah. It's hidden behind bushes, so it's kind of hard to see.
We seniors don't get our own parking lot.
No, no, no.
Very good. Other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like us to know?
I believe so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? I do have an email here. It's from Elizabeth Correll, who lives at 9 Liberty Street, which is just around the corner from this building, who said, indicates that normally I would consider a variance seeking 50% of what is required an unreasonable request. However, I do recognize that adjacent properties, tight lots, perhaps similar to this request. I don't know the footprint of the building to assess whether or not it's overbuilding the site, and leave that point to your committee. I would recommend requiring the provision of a turnaround for residents, so they can exit their property driving forward and not backing into a busy street. Are we backing into a busy street here?
We are, but that is not, for one and two-family dwellings, that's okay. But when you get over three or more, when it becomes multifamily is when that provision kicks in. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, a variance for that isn't required, but I do think it's kind of relevant, because it goes to the lot size issue.
You do have a...
Can we ask them what their plan is for the... What would your plan be?
Gentlemen, why don't you come back up? Will we consider this your factual clarification?
All right. So, we will do essentially whatever the board needs us to do in terms of parking and turnaround for tenants in that area. I do know that certain times of the day are busier than others, you know, obviously next to the school, but, yeah, I mean, essentially, we would do whatever we needed to do in order to get safe egress in and out of that parking spot.
And so, I would say, so this, the home right to the right of ours, this one is also a duplex, and it seems that they maybe added a little extra area for tenants, so obviously we have a long driveway, so they would either do tandem and just make sure that they're taking, I mean, with it being a school zone, it's, cars are going pretty slow in that area in general most of the time, or they should be.
Not high school students.
But, yeah, but any measures that we need to make, I'm willing to do, as well as, I removed all the bushes and anything that could obstruct their view looking to the direct area right here, and then there is parking space, public parking spaces on the right as well, all throughout that area too, if someone were to not be comfortable with making that decision for themselves.
So, you allow the lot coverage in that?
50%, I was just looking that up. We're on the same wavelength. So, I think if they made the driveway bigger, they might have a problem with lot coverage.
Yeah. No, it's not required for a duplex, and I think we can leave it to the judgment of the property owner to figure out how to get in and out of the driveway.
I agree.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We have a request. We'll declare, that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. Any comments or comments?
No.
We have a request to allow a single-family house to be converted to a duplex, even though the lot and the frontage are undersized according to the requirements of the ordinance. We heard testimony that all surrounding buildings are on similar small lots and are two-family or more, so that the owner considers it to be consistent with the neighborhood. We also have a request to shrink and expand the building, depending on what direction you're looking, and all of that would be in the setbacks. There was a setback issue, was it not?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. All right. Brenda?
We all wait until he picks somebody.
The fickle finger of fate.
So, you know, as a multifamily owner myself, I don't see this as contrary to the public interest. I'm not sure about the spirit of the ordinance, but I don't see this as a problem with the surrounding area. It is a multi-mix of property through that whole area. I am extremely familiar with it, as my son is now a senior up there, and is a slow traffic zone, and it's only at its busiest when the school is going in and coming out. So, I'm not as concerned with the driveway and the traffic, and he's not really changing the square footage, he's actually in the backside of it, coming more into compliance on the property, so I'm not having an issue with it.
Brenda?
As to variance for question one, I think that's, to me, that's an easy one, because they're, you know, they're moving it out of, it's continuing to be in noncompliance, but it's going to be less nonconforming by a long shot. And, you know, if they're not going to tear down that back, that back piece, and they want to try to preserve it, I mean, they got to put it somewhere, so that makes perfect sense. Two is tough.
I apologize. I thought it was a 10,000 square foot requirement for a two-family, not 15,000.
It's one and a half times the square footage of the district, so it's 10,000 in the district, so one and a half times would be your 15.
Oh. Oh, okay. Interesting.
So, as to variance two, because, you know, when we get this a lot, their point is, well, almost, most of the other properties nearby are multifamilies of some sort, and also don't conform, but the point of the zoning is not to, is not just to have everything fit in with what's already there, but to try to guide the future. On the other hand, it's, the demand for housing is definitely strongly inclined, I think, especially in an area like this, towards having two apartments, and they're already going to be having to do major layout changes with moving this piece, and they have, I think they have enough space to manage, so I, so I'd be inclined to grant variance number two, because I think it's a reasonable use, and potentially could be a hardship to try to, to try to, you know, market this as a, as a single-family in this, in this area.
Yeah, I'm inclined to support it. As Andrew said, the first one is easy, the second one, you know, given the nature of the neighborhood, I think the 66 feet of frontage is, is fine, and then the, the square footage just would be very inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm inclined to support it, because, you know, it's certainly reasonable use in line with the character of the neighborhood of being multi, multi-dwelling and on small lots.
I agree with my colleagues. I'm inclined to support it. This is, this is a fairly typical example of the sort of thing we encounter in various parts of the city, that were subdivided many, many years ago, and on which houses were built many, many years ago, and to which the ordinance does not, we wish the ordinance is not fit. Zoning relief is appropriate under those circumstances, for all the reasons that my colleagues have offered. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'd move to approve both of the variances.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? We good at the wheelhouse?
Oh, yeah. You got to dance, folks.
All right. The next case is, and the last regular item on our agenda, is an old friend of ours. 0143, 177 North Main Street. A portion of the land will ultimately be transferred to 181 North Main Street, CU Urban Commercial District, First Church Holdings LLC are the owners. The applicant wishes to enlarge and transfer a portion of their, of their parking, I believe is the word they left in there, to an abutting non-residentiality lot. The applicant requests variances from Article 28-7-2E, Table of Off-Street Parking Requirements, to permit 42 parking spaces where 60 parking spaces are required. Article 28-7-7E, Minimum Isle Width, to permit 16-foot-wide one-way aisle with 60-foot, or 60-degree angle parking spaces where an 18-foot aisle is required. Article 28-7-7A, Standard Parking Spaces, to permit standard parking spaces to be 9 feet by 18 feet where 9 feet by 19 feet are required. And Article 28-7-7G, Setbacks and Restrictions, to permit parking in non-residential district, in a non-residential district, to be within 0 feet of a lot line where 5 feet is required. Mr. Chorleyan, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
I am Jonathan Chorleyan, and as a housekeeping matter, I'll circulate. You have hard copies of the slide deck I'll use. This is a letter from Ali Seku, who's a president of the Islamic Society, who's in Niger, Africa, texted that to me. Tell you that I basically printed that out.
Thank you.
Did you say he's in Africa?
He's in, he's from Niger. I know he's in Africa. I'm guessing he's in Niger.
Well, in any case, it's not convenient for him to come here.
He cannot come, no. Let me just make sure this is... So, you're familiar with me and this project in the neighborhood, so I'll try to make this as streamlined as possible. I think we're here for a pretty discreet couple of matters. To quickly reorient, reorient you, there's the site, the neighborhood generally, the yellow is the First Church campus, if you will, on North Main Street and Washington Street, includes this small lot on Rollin Street, and the blue shaded property is the Islamic Society campus. The dotted right-of-way there is an existing driveway on our property that is subject to a right-of-way for the benefit of the Islamic Society property. That's the site plan we, the landscape version of the site plan we showed you at the August meeting, where you granted us several variances. That's the more engineering version of that. The variances that you presented us in August included, the bigger ones were allowing 30 units, number one, and allowing 49 parking spaces to support those 30 units, where 60 would be required. As we told you in August, we believe that those, well, those 49 proposed spaces would require a variance, we thought that was significantly more than the project would actually need, given the mix of units, and the fact that we expect that a number of people living here will also work downtown and have parking options there. We made that argument to the planning board as part of this major site plan approval process, and they granted us a conditional use permit to delete those seven spaces off the driveway, so it would go forward as a 42 parking space project. As you know, the Islamic Society opposed our variances in August, asked you for a rehearing, which you denied, they filed a lawsuit against the City of Concord, challenging those, which is pending in the Merrimack County Superior Court. Despite all that, we've continued to have, you know, discussions, reasonably good, productive discussions, and I'm basically here to ask you to consider several variances that would accommodate the resolution at framework that we would look upon. That resolution framework would basically involve the sale of this portion, a lot line adjustment, and the sale of that portion of our lot. As you could probably figure out from August, and as you could see from that slide, the Islamic Society has quite a parking pinch, something that was exacerbated by the closure of the church, because of the shared parking agreement that existed between those two organizations by its term. organizations, by its terms, ended when the church ended. So that's about 16 parking spaces to support the mosque. So our discussion's focused around ways to try to allow our redevelopment to move forward, including withdrawal of their, the litigation, and trying to help address their concerns about their needs for parking. So, that's, that is the handshake that we have, and our lawyers are sort of drawing it up as we speak. That piece of land that we would sell would then be developed, and this would go to the planning board, into this 12-space parking lot, one-way aisle, 60-degree parking spaces, so it would gain 12 parking spaces. So we would, seven, you know, so-called CUP spaces that the planning board is not requiring us to build, but which we need to reserve, without a variance, we would need to keep the land in order to be able to theoretically build them in the future. We will, this, the variance that we are requesting would allow us to not retain that land, but would allow for the construction of these 12 spaces for the Islamic Society. Our objective in designing that little parking lot is basically to provide dimensions, aisle width and whatnot, that allow that to work smoothly, but no more than is necessary to basically maximize the amount of lawn that can, can remain. Our feeling is that that lawn, that large lawn is significant to the viability of our project, and I think it's also just a community benefit. So, there are four variances that we're here for tonight to, that are needed to accommodate that resolution. The first is to, for a variance from 2872, to allow us to have, essentially to, in some sense, formalize what the planning board has done to an extent in allowing us 42 spaces where 60 are required for our 30 units. Then two, three sort of dimensional things to allow that impervious surface to be functional, but as small as possible, to preserve as much lawn as possible. First of all, to allow us to have our nine standard parking spaces be 18 feet deep rather than 19 feet. For some reason, 19 is Concord's standard, yet everywhere else on the planet, 18 is a standard-sized parking space. Secondly, to have our one-way drive aisle, presently that right-of-way is 14 feet, we would expand it to 16 feet. Concord would want that to be, Concord's zoning ordinance would want that to be 18 feet wide. 16 is, again, much more than national standard, you'll see 14 to 16. Every foot we save is a, is a foot of lawn that we preserve, and that's why you're seeing that. And then lastly, there's a five-foot parking setback requirement, we're asking to slightly encroach into that, essentially, so that the setback from our own new property line would be three feet, so that we can control as much of the lot line as possible. And then, secondly, there's a strip of land on the north side, about half the driveway is paved right up to the lot line, and then there's a section, I'll show you a photo in a minute, that is, where there's sort of a two-foot strip of scrub, and we are, would want to pave that so that it's a full 16 feet of width, the whole length of that driveway. So, parking counts, that's sort of a table that compares August and now, 30 units still. The bedroom mix has changed, we've had discussion about to what extent bedrooms is a, is a proxy for parking spaces. We think of it that way. I think, whether that's literally true, I think everybody can generally agree that fewer bedrooms is, will translate into fewer cars. Maybe not the, the one-to-one proxy that we believe, but the, just by the nature of working through the design of the project, we had essentially a 50-50 mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms when we saw you in August, nothing larger than a two, and now we're at, two-thirds of our units are one bedrooms. And so, the number of bedrooms has, has declined before. As you're, you know, whenever, we wouldn't be proceeding with this project and asking you for these variances if we thought there weren't enough spaces. I mean, just as a practical matter, you know, like in the downtown business district, it's sort of up to owners to figure out, the idea is basically, if you're dumb enough to not create enough parking spaces, you know, your tenants will be unhappy and you'll have turnover. I mean, the same principles apply here. I have no interest in building out a site and having, not having enough parking. I'm completely confident that 42 is enough, given mix of units and the other factors that we've discussed. I think the proposed zoning ordinance that sort of represents what our sort of modern parking quantity design standards is, is an interesting reference point. I know it's not the law, but that is going to move us, you know, to a 1.25 parking spaces per unit. And that is, you know, that was developed by that Austin consultant, and, you know, that is sort of a, more of a national standard. But again, the, the parking, the number of bedrooms has declined, and I think that will have an impact on...
Did you say it's going to be 1.25, or 1.5?
The proposed ordinance is 1.25. And it will start to differentiate between, you know, single families will continue to be two, but the idea is that multifamilies will have a lower ratio.
So, did you propose the required spaces will be less, right around 42, 1.25?
It would be 37 and a half, round up to 38. And the other reasons I'm confident that there's a sufficient quantity of parking include that, some people will work downtown, they will have parking provided through their employers, that parking is more likely to be covered parking. I already know people in similar circumstances who leave their car in their employer-provided downtown garage, rather than bring it back to their home or apartment. I'm not saying everyone will do that, but a few people do that. I think a few, there may be a few less cars because of the proximity, bikeability, walkability to downtown. And I will tell you that we, my business partner owns and other properties in this area that have excess parking. I mean, this, this is not in our interest, nor will we permit it to be an imposition on on-street parking. So, the, these parking dimensions, this is just, you will find this sort of all over the internet, these are parking, typical parking standards, you know, the 9-by-18 parking spaces standard as a standard-sized space, that's what we're asking for here, and this is actually a 14-and-a-half-foot aisle for 60-degree parking layout. I mean, there are scores and scores of municipalities around the country that use this exact exhibit in their zoning ordinances. This is literally from the Fort Worth zoning ordinance. So, this is 14 and a half, we're asked, we would provide 16. We, the Islamic Society, are completely comfortable that these dimensions will, will work well, and save us a few feet of lawn. And lastly, I said, you know, there's this, for some reason, you know, there's our driveway, it's paved right up to the lot line for about half of its length, and then this is a granite wall and a fence, and then there's this sort of two feet of just junk. We would, to widen this to 16 feet for its entire length, would, would pave that, which would result in zero setback, because of the fence and the, and the granite wall would have no visual impact on, on anybody.
Is the fence bonded to your neighbor?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I, the way it wraps around suggests to me that it is, but I don't know the answer to that.
And the flat side is facing out, traditionally means that the owner owns the side that has the slats that hold it together, that's how you're supposed to install them, so it should belong, potentially it belongs to the neighbor, because...
I'll have to remember to put that in my specs.
It's supposed to look cleaner from the outside?
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay. Is it fair to say that requesting seven less than was previously approved, and all the other variances are, are followed along with that with what we granted previously? All, the other three variances that you're requesting are all variances we previously had approved for the 49 spots? Just you now need them again for the 42 spots, is that true?
You granted us parking space size variances to allow us to have eight-and-a-half by 17, so-called hybrid spaces for our lot? These are larger than we requested for that. The, our thinking was to design the spaces a little bit larger, just because I think the hybrid spaces work better in more of a controlled environment where we can police it. And I think, you know, this is, this will be members and visitors to the mosque, but people will have less familiarity, and I think having the space be a little bit bigger there is, is more appropriate. So, so it's a, it's a, you grant us a more significant parking space size reduction.
All your requests are as to the mosque parking lot?
Yeah.
Oh.
Part of our job in this resolution is to...
To get the variances now.
Get the variances, get the site plan approvals.
So my question is to Dr. Tracy, because I see what, why you're doing that, that you're trying to resolve the issues completely before you transfer the land to them, that's part of your agreement, which inside of me, I'm like, yay, they've come to a solution together, I love that. But can they do that? Can they get that all resolved for them and then cut that land off?
The only, yep, they can.
Okay.
It would just be like a subdivision that hasn't occurred yet, you've approved things on before in the past.
Okay.
They, they have to commence their parking lot to retain the variance within two years. So, as long as they do something, get the permit, start construction, do something within two years, then their variances kind of help. So, and they're aware of that.
And they know that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and, I mean, frankly, having one civil engineer involved in everything, just, you know.
That makes it easier. I just wanted to make sure of that, because...
Yep.
I want to repeat the wheel here. Plus, I didn't want to say, like, if we're approving him for 42, but we're actually technically giving him 54, because there's 12 more spaces, but they're not going to be his spaces, like, I just wanted, didn't want to complicate it, or make sure that when we approve the variances, that it's clear what we're approving.
Yep.
That those 12 aren't going to be retained by the...
This project has been through the city's developing team, the planning is on board with the fact that this needs to go to them, and everything that needs to happen to make it happen for the other owner, yep.
I would add on the point of parking quantity, well, there are, if, were you to grant this variance, that would be seven parking spaces that the planning board has said we don't have to build, but could not be built in the future.
Yes.
But it will result in 12 parking spaces being built for a user who puts a lot of cars on the public street. So I think you'll hear testimony from one of my neighbors that some concern about the impacts of our parking quantity, but I would, I would suggest that this resolution among being good for the Islamic Center is a, immediately a net of 12 more spaces that would be built, and even if we were compared to what we would theoretically be required to build down the road, in some potential world, we're still plus five. So I think then, from a pressure on the streets of Concord standpoint, we're better off in both scenarios.
I'm thrilled to see that the two most impacted, which is the two neighboring properties, have worked together.
Hasn't been easy, but I give, I give Ali Seku a lot of credit in his will to see that happen.
If we, I assume from looking at the design, that you would enter this parking lot from North Main Street. How do you exit it?
You...
Through the other...
Onto Pearl Street?
Yes. And really, there's kind of an elegance to the design, in a way, if you think about it. So, the address of the mosque is 181 North Main Street, you know, obviously it has, it's, pedestrian entrance is more off Pearl Street, and, you know, presently, people tend to err on Pearl Street. We find it can be a bit of a difficulty. I mean, the, the primary benefit of this resolution is additional parking. The other is that this strip of land produces, will be a sign, almost certainly, right there. So, the idea is that new visitors to the mosque, you know, when Google tells you it's 180 North, 1 North Main Street, you'll see it where, I mean, I can't tell you how many people in my time, walking around First Church, I will direct to the mosque, you know, on Friday afternoons. It's just, it's tough to find. So, you will exit onto Pearl Street. I suspect what will happen is more newcomers will enter that way, and then as people sort of learn where the parking is, some will do this, and some will proceed up Pearl Street and park in other lots.
Other questions for Mr. Charlie?
Sorry, I, I think you addressed this, but I was just, I'm still wrapping my head, or I was still wrapping my head. So the, this, the zero setback request, that's, that zero will be as to your property?
No, the, the three here will be as to us. So that is a three-foot setback. It's this thing that...
Oh, it'll be as to these other two parcels here?
It's, it's, the paving of that little strip of, you know, whatever it is, will result in a...
Are those single-family houses there? One of them is there with that fence?
Yes.
John, can I exit this, so I can loop that up for him?
I think the one next door is a business.
One of them's already almost at zero, and then the other one has like just that two-foot of scrub.
So that's a two-family, this one here. And this one is...
Three, four?
It's office and apartments.
The one that's right on North Main?
Yep.
Yeah, that one, there is no setback between...
And this is a duplex.
That's where it's...
And that one has that two little feet of...
Already.
Yep.
Yes, okay, got it. It would essentially just continue that next, you know, 30 feet of length.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Lemieux.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Swear to tell the truth?
I do, absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen, I have, I am hoarse tonight, so I'm going to make this quick to keep us all from having, experiencing any more pain than necessary. I live at 7 Washington Street, arguably the closest property, closest residential property to the church that's being redeveloped. I was here before you in August, in support of the amendments that were, or the adjustments that are being proposed, and I'm in support of the adjustments that are being proposed now. So this, we, we thank, my wife and I have lived there for 31 years, and we think these, this property, this development, will be a net benefit to our property and to our neighbors' properties. So, as I said, we are the closest, probably the closest property to, to the parking lots, so if there's any overflow parking, I believe, probably the space in front of my house will be the number one sought place to park if that, when that parking lot is full. But we have experienced people parking in front of our house before, and it hasn't been an issue, and we don't expect it to be an issue going forward. So with that, I'm in favor of the amendments that are being proposed tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Please come forward.
We also have a slider.
We have, we have a, a letter from Roy. Yeah.
So you've seen the letter?
Yeah, we have seen the letter, but we have you in person, so fill us in. We, you're still in your oath and all that good stuff.
Okay.
And you're still Roy Schweiger, according to, yeah.
Yeah, I will make this quick. Essentially, what I'm unhappy about is that people seem to think that this proposed zoning ordinance, which is designed to turn Concord into a middle-class community where it never snows, is being used to justify, you know, things in this issue. I mean, for instance, maybe in Fort Worth, you can have a narrower aisle because you're not plowing snow to the sides of it, but I don't think that's true here. You can never get rid of every last drop of snow, so things are going to shrink. So my, my real concern is, I've lived in this neighborhood over 50 years, and the, just the number of cars keep increasing, there's more cars every year. I mean, people talk about, well, we're going to go to biking and walking and whatnot, but this isn't happening. And you may have seen a picture in the thing I sent you about two cars parked on the sidewalk opposite each other. So you're blocking two sidewalks and half of the street. So, you know, all pedestrians, all the cars are going up in the middle of the street. And, you know, there was one day, there was three cars parked. I nearly thought I'd call one of the mayors, but the problem is, it was Sunday morning, he was parking church, he wouldn't want to come to look at the parking, but, you know, there's just, I can't believe how many cars keep existing. And maybe there are other communities where a two-bedroom apartment... And maybe there are other communities where a two-bedroom apartment is occupied by a single person who uses a second bedroom for an office, but I think in Concord, that's more likely to be two people. I think even a one-bedroom apartment could easily have two people and two cars. In my neighborhood, there's a lot of people who are tradesmen who have these giant oversized vans. There's a picture of one of those that's parked on the street that doesn't even fit into a, you know, a street parking space. So, I think that I, the developer's done an amazing job, you know, shrinking the number of bedrooms to make things better. They've done an amazing job of coming to an agreement with the Islamic Society to give them more parking spaces, but that doesn't necessarily help the rest of us in the neighborhood who are being choked by more and more cars. So, I would really like you to consider, not just in this instance, but in other ones, that there's more cars and not less, and maybe the city should be increasing the number of required parking spaces instead of decreasing it. And that's what I have to say unless you have any questions about my letter.
Any questions? And as much as your letter more or less says what you just said, I won't read it into the record, but it is here for everyone to read, and everyone has seen it. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Is there a tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you sign in, please?
I'd rather deduct my identity just for privacy reasons. I'm just not a big fan of Googling my name. I own property. They know who I am. I'm a neighbor. I'm a butler.
If we don't know who you are, we can't take your testimony.
Well, I, I think as a concerned citizen, you have to at least hear two seconds of what I have to say. I commend this gentleman right here. We don't live in La La Land. People don't commute to work. Snow issues, setbacks. We don't live in La La Land, okay? Let's live in reality. These people are going to have broken-down cars, their kids' cars, their boyfriend's cars.
You're not, you must understand, you're not making very good use of your time or ours here if you want to identify yourself.
I'm, I'm not going to identify myself because I can't for security reasons. I own property, abutting this property. I'd be happy to provide you with who I am. There's no question, the old mayor knew me. I've had parking issues down here. I've been in front of the parking board. I don't know if any of you were on the parking board. We've made some deals or conditions or changed some, some rules on, do you remember Washington? Were you on the parking board or?
No.
Okay. You're nodding your head, so I don't think you were there. Anyway, I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. It's, it's a disservice to the community to be stuffing something that is non-conforming, wasn't even...
We can't accept your testimony.
It's not personal. It's just...
It's not...
You know what? I don't...
All you have to do is identify yourself and you can say your piece.
I don't want to identify myself because I can't, right? I can't for personal reasons. I can't be, be monitored because all this stuff is public. If it was like, in the old days where you could...
Hide everything?
No, hide everything, but I was a teacher. I couldn't even look for my teacher's name in a phone book because they changed your last name. It was privacy things. Now, today, you put your name up. I show up on every meeting of everything that I ever did, and my business isn't, that's my, my personal life and my business life are two separate things. I'm talking on behalf of my property that has seven tenants that are putting cars on that...
Thank you, sir.
You know, you don't get it, dude. I...
It's not that we don't get it. This is a quasi, I understand.
As a neighbor, as a property owner in this...
This is a quasi-judicial board. We have to have names on the record.
I'm not putting my name on the record.
Then, then you, then, that's fine, but please sit down.
You guys are making huge mistakes. Full share.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Any comments from code enforcement?
No.
Mr. Charlie, would you like to offer any factual clarification in response to what you've heard?
No, I just hope that you've seen Ali's letter.
Yes. Oh, should we probably read that to the record?
Which one, which letter was that?
Ali's letter that he, the text message.
Oh, yes, you did, yes. We did see Ali's letter, and he's in favor of the appeal, which should not come as any great surprise.
We should probably clarify that he, that's, he's writing that in his individual capacity, not his capacity.
Yes, yes. He does not give an address for himself. Well, it's short, I'll read it. "I would like you to know that members of the Islamic Society have had several productive meetings with John and Ben to discuss how a redevelopment of the first congregational church project can be balanced with impacts to the Islamic Society and the Pearl Street neighborhood. We agreed to buy a portion of the land, lawn, from John and Ben. The sale agreement and other agreements are draft or revised by our legal representatives. We are, believe that the proposal sale will balance these interests and allow the Islamic Society to construct additional parking for our growing mosque. That will have a benefit to both the Islamic Society and the Pearl Street neighborhood. We support the variance and request before you tonight that you allow the sale of the proposed land to the Islamic Society of Greater Concord and our construction of the additional parking." So, I'm speaking on behalf of the Islamic Society, which is fine, which is, we know their address, they're next door. Very good. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and I will invite discussion by the board. I will dispense with the summary since I think we've all heard in detail what had to be said. Maybe start with Mr. Walder. Get that under the table. What do you think there?
Well, obviously, we have a very complicated set of issues with these multiple properties, and I think what Mr. Charlie has done is, has addressed all the concerns in, I think, a very adequate way. I think the parking issue seems to satisfy the Islamic Society. I think the number of spaces issue has been addressed properly, and so I'm inclined to support all four variance requests.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I agree, and I think it's also, you know, possible to take a look at what's before us without consideration of the drama around the, what's happened before us on its own. I think it stands on its own. The variances are reasonable, the size differential are, you know, a couple of feet for the width of the thing, and that, and I'm comfortable with a parking spot that's 18 feet deep instead of 19 feet deep.
Andrew?
Yeah, I think as, as to request two through four, two, three, and four, all of those are modest, and they're, they're, they were well explained, they're consistent with what we approved previously for the same reasons. As to one, I understand what Jim's saying, but as far as what was said before, but I want to just note that we, that was a very well-litigated and lengthy-litigated case. We really strongly considered many different interests, including the applicant, Islamic Center, many neighbors, and other interested parties. We scrutinized it very carefully. In fact, we did not grant the original request. It came back scaled, and we, we approved it because of the very unique structure. And, and, and that, in my mind, that all of those reasons are consistent with going from 49 to 42. I don't think that seven spot difference materially impacts our reasoning from, from before. It's not, it's not ideal because it's cramming a lot into a, in tight space, but given the existing structure, I think it's, it is a reasonable use and continues to be with seven less spots.
I'm in agreement with all four. I actually had voted no to this in the last one, but knowing that this has gone before the planning board and that they're in agreement, knowing that this has resolved an issue as well, like, I'm, I'm feeling much better about the entire project.
I'm inclined to agree with my colleagues. I think the fact that they've changed the number of bedrooms, reduced the number of bedrooms mitigates, to some extent, the, the pressure on the parking. I think the, the size of the parking lot, it's not, it's, it's, it's not unprecedented, and it's really not a public problem. If they can't fit cars on their parking lot, it's, it's a private problem. It's the problem of, of the tenants and the, and the owner. And I think, all things considered, Andrew said, this is an extraordinary situation, and we seem to have a solution that actually improves things over what we had before, other than losing a bit of lawn. So, I will support it as well. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Do you want to make them separately, or you want to do...
We can, we do it either way. If the board would prefer to take them separately, we can do so. We can...
Want to do one separate and then the parking ones?
Well, yeah, because three of them are dimensions and one is a number of parking spaces, so that might make some logical sense.
Okay. I'll move to approve on item number one.
It's been seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I think as Andrew observed and others, it's a very unique piece of property. We're trying to make the, all involved are trying to make the best use of it. I do think there is reasonable evidence as presented that the required 60 spaces is probably not required, given the, not necessary, and it is, has been served a business decision by the, the developer that he can keep his tenants happy.
As, and we have a second? We did have a second, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and the rationale is consistent with what you...
It is.
Your second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. Do I hear another motion for the...
I move to approve items two, three, and four. These are all modest dimensional issues with regard to securing additional parking places on a very unique piece of property.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Is anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. All four variances are granted. That takes care of the regular section of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting? I hear a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the rationales from the, the findings of fact from the January meeting? Do I have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve the findings of fact from the January meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Any other business to come before us tonight?
No, we have 10 new cases to mark in addition to what you tabled, so it'll be, it'll be a fun night.
Oh, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Is there...
Do you think we need, we can do it on a one, two-hour period?
Three.
I know.
Yeah, we can try.
Well...
That includes them all.
That includes, well, it's 11, 12 with them all.
Why don't, would you send around the draft?
Will do.
And I'll take a look at it and maybe...
About to meet with council, too, right?
So, March fifth.
Maybe make a recommendation to the board?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to come in early for the meeting with council?
That may be the best way to do it.
Do you have hard copyments from last meeting?
But in that case, you could get, still get to be a long night.
Even if we came in at 5:30? Two different questions, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can come in at 5:30.
Is there something we should be reminding the public when we start that these are required to be public?
That's it.
I think it's pretty much known.
I'm not on the, I, I'm not on there.
Yeah, I mean...